October 14, 2018, meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Hudson.
Present.
Maruzzi.
Here.
Woods.
Here.
Vice Chair Kellardine has not arrived, and Chair Womack.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, October 18. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
Okay, an acceptance of the agenda. Can I have a motion? Second, if we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're at public comments. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on the consent calendar and other agenda items and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. Members of the public who would like to comment on 1A, 1B, and 3A are directed to comment under the public comments section of the agenda, and that would be everything except for the city-requested zone text amendment. Public comment is open if you have testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is John McCoy. I live at 1650 Avenida Sevilla, and I'm here today speaking as a private citizen regarding item 3A. The Pinnacle Development is within 500 feet of my house, so I have been noticed on this, and want to state that when -- a little background, when I moved to the neighborhood, this was dedicated open space. Open space sold it. It did have an existing plot plan on it. Those lots were approved, and people in the neighborhood were upset that this was happening. We accepted that it's happening. The lots have been there. They're graded. They are not flat lots. They're hillside lots. They're extremely exposed, and the proposed home is inappropriate for the site. It is a very large, flat design. There is no steps on the interior. There's no -- it will require huge amounts of grading for the lot. It also, on the backside, has vast expanses of glass where the neighbors below will be looking up, and it does not fit in context with what is going on in the area. The landscaping does not have any reference to what is existing up there. The existing homes have desert landscaping, boulders used to retain the boundaries between the land, and the retaining walls proposed, everything about it just does not fit. I know there are arguments within the HOA as to how this is all coming together. There are -- there have been battles within changing the HOA language so that the current property owners could do things that were disallowed to the previous homes that were built up there. The neighbors are not happy about this and feel that when it comes to hillside development, it deserves much better for everyone in the city than what is being proposed here.
Hello, I'm Tom Ford, and I live on Ridge Moore Drive and am a member of the Ridge Moore Drive residence. I just want to -- we -- this is the highest point in Andreas Hills, and we all see this point. The -- just to express my concerns that the -- some of the things that brought up the Architectural Review Committee, that the paint colors should be dark to match the hillsides. I mean, we don't say that we can't have development there. We just want to make sure, since we're going to see these huge exposed sheets of glass and stuff and retaining walls, that it is -- the colors on the hillside, it's dark beige and dark gray tones, that there is a -- we've worked with the Architectural Review Committee that these are some of the things, that there's minimal lighting outside that conforms to the Palomar and Dark Skies laws, that inside they have tinted glass on the big 14-foot walled glass of windows minimizing the light spill. And what is this tint percentage? We'd like to know. The landscaping on these big retaining walls that face the rest of all the neighbors, that it incorporates naturalized landscaping, rocks and stuff to minimize these walls, that the whole project should blend more into the hillside instead of trying to stick out on the hillside. I think they've been working on some of these, but it's sort of the wrong house for the site, but I think he's been working with us. But we have never seen like the final plans of what proposed. Every time we had for architectural reviews, some of the stuff would change, but there would not be an architect there to ask questions, and we don't know what the final thing is for us to comment on what the final project is. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Hi, I'm Brian Foster. I'm the applicant for the subject property at Pinnacle Point, and we've been going through a process with the Architectural Advisory Committee as well as the Homeowners Association for a number of months. We've taken into consideration virtually everybody's concerns, and we've done everything that everyone's asked. So at this point, we'd like to move forward on this project. You may be aware, I've also was the applicant for the home on Cantina Way, and that home is under construction at this point, so we're moving forward on that. A lot of these questions and information that keep coming up are the same concerns that the neighbors have had, but at this point, we're -- we've been dedicated to meet with the homeowners, meet with everybody involved in this project, and we believe at this point we've overcome everything. There's been a lot of misinformation given, and at this point, we're ready to move forward. So we appreciate your input. If you have any questions, I'll be here. Let me know.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any of the items? The public hearing is closed. The first item on our consent -- we have the consent calendar, and it's the approval of the minutes of September 12, 2018. Item 1A and 1B is Stephen Winters and Don Curtis, owners requesting approval of a 395 square foot casita on 65402 square foot -- oh, on a square foot hillside lot located at 1,000 Coronado Avenue. I would like to pull the minutes. Do you want to pull both 1A and 1B? On the minutes, and it is -- oh, we don't need a staff report in the minutes, do we? Okay, good. My concern is on pages four and five, the testimony of Paul Heinrichsen and Robert Heinbaum. I believe those should be expanded. They gave expanded testimony saying they were representing several of their neighborhood organizations, and they gave testimony about being able to smell odors in their homes a mile away, and I believe for this item, that testimony should be preserved in the record.
I only have minutes from September 12.
It's September 12. I'm sorry.
Oh.
And it's on page -- the bottom of page four and the top of page five.
I have a question for Flynn.
Flynn, would, if other people agree with me, would these be brought back?
They don't need to be brought back unless you would like to see them again.
Lynn, you have a question on that?
Oh, just a very quick question on page one under the consent calendar. Last textual line, it says, "The study session minutes were tabled due to lack of voting quorum." Have those come back to us?
I believe they have. Yeah, they were at the last meeting. So I'm going to make a motion with those two changes.
I'll second it.
Well, I'm just confused because I was at the meeting where that was discussed, but I'm --
No, there was a second meeting. This is the first meeting. We had it.
Oh, right, okay. Sorry about that. Thank you for clarifying that. I'll abstain.
So we have enough people here? I think we -- yeah, so I made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have to abstain also. I wasn't there.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have four ayes, so it passes. Okay, going to item 1B, and you want a full staff report on this.
I just have one quick question.
Can we deal with this with the question and then see if we can move forward with it?
Yes. My question for Ken is, the applicants have agreed to the roof treatment. Is that your understanding?
Yes, the roof treatment that's being recommended by staff is the roof treatment that the applicants have requested.
That's the end of my questions.
Then I would make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
And this doesn't show, so shall we do it by voice? Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Who was the second on that motion?
I did.
What I would like to do, and I didn't do it in the -- in the acceptance of the agenda, is I'd like to move 3A to our next item because we have members of the public here, and it's a public-generated item. So the next item will be item 3A, and I saw the rest of the commissioners assenting. So could we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Chair. We'll wait for a second till the slide comes up. So this is a request to construct a 3,378 square foot house on a hillside lot as a major architectural and administrative minor modification to reduce the front yard setback at 1721 Pinnacle Point. So let me go to one of the very last slides, which will show the development, and I'll describe where we are. So Lot 2 in this slide shows Adalar Road, which was the original name of the street when the project was first plotted back in the '80s. The road name has been changed to Pinnacle Point, which is the name of the subdivision. So you'll see that there are three houses that currently exist at the end of the cul-de-sac. As I mentioned, it is a hillside lot within the Andreas Hills neighborhood, and they are proposing to build Lot 2, which is the middle of the slide at the bottom on the south end. You'll see to the south of the project, there is a Riverside County floodway project.
Can you point out Lot 2, please?
Sure. So as I mentioned, the Riverside County floodway lot runs -- channel runs behind this lot, which is several tens of feet below, and then the lots that are at the very bottom of the slide are along Ridge Moore Drive. Let me go back to the site plan. So while I'm going through the slides, the material board is next to Commissioner Woods, which -- oh, it's making its way through. So that material board shows the colors that are proposed, the paint chips, and the materials for doors and windows, and then the roof material. So the project has been before the Architectural Advisory Committee four times. On June 4, July 16, September 17, there was not a quorum, so it was continued to October 1. And throughout the process, each time the AAC has made recommendations, the applicant has made changes to the project. Some of the changes include revising a landscape plan, changing the roof color, changing the actual colors of the house. When the house first was presented, it was a white and gray color scheme. It's now changed to a beige and brown color scheme, which is this slide here. So the final version of the project shows the house setback 18 feet from the front property line, which will provide off-street parking in a driveway. Originally, the house was setback 16 feet. It was one of the very first comments that was made by the AAC to move the house back, and they did that, but this still requires a setback reduction from the 25-foot front yard setback, which the Planning Commission can grant that. The zoning code allows the Planning Commission to grant a setback reduction of 18 feet. So you'll see that the house consists of the garage, which faces the street, a front entry, which is glass. The height of the house is 16 feet with a maximum height of 18 to the top of the parapet. In this slide, you'll see the landscaping is rather formal with angular angles to the front with boulders, acatiele. There are some palaverde trees and some golden barrel cactus. The original landscape plan had palm trees, which there are no other palm trees in the Pinnacle Point development, and those were removed. So the landscape plan has been changed to reflect that. These are succession of slides looking at the house from different angles. One of the comments by the AAC was to show the solar panels on the roof, and that's what these slides are showing. They will have solar panels, which is a requirement of the city, and there will be a low parapet that will screen it. As you are within the development, the three houses that are to the top of the hill are higher than this, and the solar panels may be visible from those houses higher up on the hill. Also in this slide, you'll see that the hill on the very far Also in this slide, you'll see that the hill on the very far right drops down to the channel, the flood channel below. There was discussions about what the fencing would be. It's not shown in this drawing, but they're proposing a tubular steel fence that will go where the concrete block wall ends around the back and down the hill a little bit so that it won't be visible when you're on the pool deck. There's also been discussion about grading on the lots. You'll see that the, there are retaining walls. Get to one of the... So in this front slide, the retaining wall on the very far left does retain some land, but they're going to be grading it so that the wall's no higher than six feet. And there was a question about, was there permission from the HOA to allow the grading off of these lots? And if you remember, in the first slide I showed of the development, there is open space that is around each of these individual lots, which are about 25 feet between Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4. In speaking with the engineering department, if the HOA allows them to grade off on the open space and there's no easements or other agreements that would prevent them from doing that, they could, as long as the slopes are not greater than 30%. And that would have to be verified when we get into the process of a building permit. Let me work through some more of these slides. So there is a building elevation plan that was submitted back on October 1st. This elevation has not changed from that meeting, and it was, this was uploaded to the web and was in public view when the plans were published last Thursday. There's a floor plan showing a large great room, and as described, there is a large expanse of glass on the rear of the house and a less amount on the front, and then a garage off of Pinnacle Point Road, and then three bedrooms with associated restroom or bathrooms. There's a floor, I'm sorry, a roof plan showing the location of the solar panels and lighting. So let me go back. There is a lighting plan. This is the lighting plan. When the project first came in, there was a large expanse overhang that went over the back of the house, overhanging the pool deck. That overhang has been reduced, and there was a large amount of lights that were included in that first approval. So we've worked it to this submittal, which shows, and I know it's hard to see, I'll go to the board. They're proposing four lights, one here, one here. This is the back of the house, and then two lights in the front overhang. And this has been reduced from the original submission based upon comments from the AAC and the residents. And this is a picture of a house that the applicant has built, and it shows the type of light, recessed lights with shields that will focus the light downward. I have one more picture showing that. And if the commission so chooses, they can ask the applicant for more description. So once again, these are some photographs of the site, the Lot 2. You can see in this picture is fairly flat. However, it does have a slope that slopes down from the houses that are higher up on the hill. Once again, we'd have to verify that the slopes between Lot 2 and Lot 3 and the open space is not more than 30%. And this is a photograph of the rear. It drops off to the back to the channel, which you can't see below there, but you can see Ridge Moore Drive in the background. So within your packet, there is letters from the neighbors over the course of the review of the project since June. There are minutes from those meetings. There is also an approval letter from the HOA for this plan that's before you today. There's a statement of ownership, material board, and other cross-sections and grading topo plans that are included in your packet. So the project was noticed to adjacent and abutting property owners, which is a requirement of the hillside ordinance. We also received additional information that is before you today from the AAC Subcommittee. When the AAC approved, recommended approval, they asked that several things go back to the, to a Subcommittee, and the applicant did revise two of the plans. He revised the landscape plan and the grading plan showing the grading onto the open space lot. So the AAC at the last meeting recommended that the parapet be no greater than 18 feet tall, that the roof deck be a maximum height of 16, that the front elevation eyebrow be changed as it meets the garage, and I can show you that in this slide. So in this slide, you'll see the gray angle, angular overhang where it meets the garage. They also recommended that tinted glass be used on the front and rear windows of the great room to reduce light glare from the interior. And they also asked that the ceiling within the great room be flat. The applicant has chosen not to revise, or not to tint the glass, and he may want to comment on that, and not change the ceiling within the great room to be flat. And the eyebrow is as shown here in this plan. So the AAC also recommended that the landscape plan be more natural, placement of plants in a more organic design, reduce the amount of gravel for the ground cover, and the walls over six feet height to be split into two, which is no longer an issue because they're grading into the common space, and they wanted a fence color that would blend in with the hillside. So that concludes my report. As I mentioned, the applicant is here, and I can answer any other questions.
Questions, starting with Commissioner Hirschman.
Thank you. Thanks for the report, Glenn. I was, you know, we just received this additional information packet, and, well, let me ask you some questions first. How many times has, is this the second time it's been before Planning Commission?
This is the first.
First time, so Planning Commission hasn't seen this before.
You have not seen this.
Okay. What, in terms of that open space between the lots and the grading, the stipulation was that if it does not get to be greater than 30% slope, in the event that it does, what happens?
They would have to come back and revise the plan.
Come back to who?
It would come back to staff or the Planning Commission for another action.
So could we, hypothetically, could we condition an approval on the thing not, that slope not being greater than 30%, and if it is, that it would come back to Planning Commission?
Yes, you could do that.
We could do that, okay. Then finally, like I started to say, we just got this additional information packet when we sat down here. Can you review Committee Member Lockyer's comments and what the response was? I'd be most interested in the ones that he wrote in red on the site plans.
Right, so I included the larger version and then I zoomed in so you could read it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so if you look at the precise grading plan, there was a comment, "What happened to adding plants within the concrete mass to soften the building?" The applicant has chosen not to do that.
Concrete mass, meaning the patio?
Right, where the patio meets the building wall.
Okay.
In the front or the back?
In the rear. All these comments are relative to the rear of the house. Okay?
Yep.
"What is being done to renaturalize the slope?"
Something, not nothing was suggested to be done here to achieve a more natural-looking vertical face.
The added planter, I suppose, might help, but without any indication of what the plant material proposed within the planter, I'm skeptical of how this will improve the site from below. So he was concerned about what the view was from Ridge Moore and from down below the flood channel area.
So the answer was they added a planter but did not include it in the landscape plan?
Right, so there's a planter at the edge of the pool, if you see that on this plan, that was not in the original submission, so he's added a planter.
But is that to camouflage or to soften the face of the retaining wall? Because it looks like the retaining wall would be downslope from the planter.
Right, so this, my understanding-
Oh, the plants would hang over?
My understanding is that the, it's not really an infinity edge pool, but it would be sort of at grade with, where the slope falls off. So this planter would attempt to achieve a softening from down below.
But where's the, in relation to the planter, where's the retaining wall?
Well, there is no retaining wall.
There's no, I thought the rear-
Let me go to the-
I thought the rear had a retaining wall. Oh, okay.
I don't think so.
I know it's tough to see, but this planter area here-
Yeah.
You'll see that the topo lines, there's not, it doesn't slope off, it's, it's flat with the ground, and then it drops down.
I thought the site section showed a retaining wall at the back. Am I right about that? Yeah.
It looks to me like the pool deck is at 604, and then the adjacent grade at the slope, if I'm reading this correctly, is 399. So would there be a five-foot drop?
If you go to page 85.1, "Streetfront to Rear Slope Section," there is a retaining wall at the back. It's shown 604, doesn't really show what the grade at the bottom of that is, and I cannot, oh, top, top of footing is 598. Anyway, there is a retaining wall there, so my question is, where's the planter in relation to that retaining wall? Is it on the up-
Right, I see what you're saying. The applicant will have to respond.
Okay, so, so what is Committee Member Lockyer saying there? In the-
Well, in, let's go to the landscape plan. So on the landscape plan, he's concerned about what the rear will look like. As you can see in this drawing, there's some century plants, a boulder, but there's no other planting that is off the edge.
Yeah, but that doesn't show a retaining wall, so I don't know how accurate that rendering is.
Right, so here's the landscape plan, so it shows limited planting in the rear.
Yeah, I just don't think that that's what he's referring to. I think Lockyer's referring to the face of the retaining wall as it, as it presents to the neighborhood.
Can I just interject? Is there a neighborhood to the rear of the house? Is that, is that the issue?
Yeah, that's what they-
Yeah, and that, it's not shown in any of the drawings or photos.
Well, it is on 5.1. If you look at 5.1, there's a cross-section, and it shows a retaining wall at the back of the property.
Wish this were marked. See that? Is there a photo that shows the houses or the view from the back houses?
Yes, that aerial, the very last slide. There's not a cross-section because it's, it's fairly far away. So you see in this picture, the houses that are down below is Ridge Moore. There's Ridge Moore, and where that boulder is, that's the lot.
Okay, and then why don't we just finish up with his final comment? If this fence-
If this fence follows the property line as shown, the height will undulate with the grades underlying it. Might the fence, might the fence want to undulate in plain, in plan view slightly as well and be broken up with boulder croppings? So neighbors' rear yard, two houses east of this subject property, for an example. That could be a recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Just give me one sec, I'm sorry. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Hudson? Commissioner Marutse?
I was the Planning Commission representative who attended this meeting, and they had a lot of very detailed questions, to the point where there was a Subcommittee that was established, and I see the minutes here. So the, in terms of the six recommendations, only the first two are being agreed to, the height of the building to 18 feet and the roof deck to a maximum height of 16?
That's correct.
So I'll have to ask applicant why they rejected the last three. It was a very detailed discussion with a lot of, well, the notes don't indicate how many questions there were and how the ultimate vote was in terms of all these different elements, but I can explain it once we get to the point where we're asking questions of the applicant.
Commissioner Woods?
I don't see in the packet, but just to ask anyway, did the applicant provide a rendering or a view of the property from the rear, the rear of his property from down below? I don't, particularly, I'm looking for like how the fence, which appears to be on the hillside, was configured.
Right, no, there's no compiled view from Ridge Moore. But there is a drawing from the rear, but it doesn't show the fence.
Doesn't show the fence?
Or the wall.
Okay, and I think, you know, I also had the opportunity to visit the site, and I also was on the AAC, and I think this picture depicts one of the comments that they were expressing, which was, there was a lack of detail in a lot of the work that was presented. So my question was really about the fence, and if it was presented, it appears it's not. Thank you.
Where do we stand on the paint colors? Has the HOA agreed to this scheme that we have in front of us?
Yes.
And has the public seen that scheme as well? And some of the comments that we got under public comment address the colors, and I don't know that, has everyone in the public had a chance to take a look at that scheme?
Yes, the paint color has not changed since the September meeting, so it's been to AAC twice with that paint scheme.
But the homeowners association has approved it? On several of the items that were cited by the Architectural Advisory Committee, one of them was like, the living room or the great room ceiling should be flat. Could you explain what that was about?
Right, so the, it's sort of a shed-style roof, so the back end of the house is taller, that has the clear story. So in this picture, you can see the clear-story windows, so the roof slopes towards the street. So that, there are lights in the ceiling that could be visible from Ridge Moore, the residents are saying.
Is that what they were objecting to? Is that they, they might look up and see the lights in the ceiling? Is that the concern?
Please.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Where's the roof deck? It's supposed to be at 16 feet.
Let me go to-
This is the surface of the roof, it's not an actual-
No, it's not a, when I say roof deck, it's the, the top of the roof, so in the elevations.
They use tinted glazing on the front and rear windows of the great room to reduce light glare from the interior. What was that about, and have we addressed it?
The proposal is collapsing door system-
Yes.
That the AAC felt that you could tint tho, that glass so that at night the lights would not be as bright.
And the applicant is not proposing to do that?
That's correct.
And you know what their reasoning is?
He should speak for himself.
Okay. And I think, was there any other, I think those are the, those are the ones, I didn't understand, they revised the front elevation eyebrow as it meets the garage, what that was about.
In this drawing, you see that it, it has a little, they were concerned about this piece here. Wanted it lower, so it's all one piece.
And they're not proposing to do that either? And they're not proposing to do that either?
That's correct.
Wait, is that one—
No revisions.
And there's no revision. So again, four, three, four, and five have not been addressed. And let's see if I had anything else. There was a question raised about whether they have—the applicant has the ability to grade off the pad onto the open space area. Do they have—if we verify that they have that legal authority?
If the HOA approves it—
Okay. Do you know we know if they have on this case?
I do not have a letter in the file that that request has been made yet.
Okay. That's all I have at the moment.
Can you explain to me which landscape they were—the there was a concern about? Basically, what it looks to me like, the rear of the property, to some extent, is also the front of the property for different homeowners, so that the attention that's been paid to the rear is significant because that's what people are going to see that are on a lower plane, correct?
Right, so in this slide, the original submission had use of white rock. That's been removed. Now it's a gray rock scheme. And then if I go to the rear, as you can see, there's limited landscaping proposed on the rear.
So the objection is to the landscaping on the rear and not the landscaping on the front?
Right. One of the comments from Member Lockyer was to add some landscaping to soften the back of the—
I have to interrupt. The letter from Tom Jackway, dated October 18th, specifically states, "The committee felt that the front yard was too busy with too many different elements and geometries." I remember that very distinctly.
Right, that's correct.
Wasn't just the rear—
They not state that?
We're talking along the rear, but they also had a lot of issues with the front.
Just as I'm looking at this, it feels to me like I would like to see more simulations from the rear of the property. I feel like that's missing from the packet in terms of what we're being asked to do today. Showing both the retaining wall, the fence, and the view of this from neighbors' homes.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
I would also request a view looking up, Pinnacle Point Drive, basically from the entry gate, looking up to see what this house would look like, and the perimeter block wall at the west edge of the property, what's being proposed?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I'm just—it's—you don't have the floor right— I still have it. If I can hold on to it for a second. It—I think without that, it's going to be very hard to make a decision on this. So what I would like us to do is—and I hate doing this, but I'd like to send it back, get those materials in front of us. And I know that this has gone several times. I don't like the idea of sending it back to the AAC. But I do think it's hard to not have that in front of us.
Are you asking that it go back to AAC or just come back to us?
No, I'd like it to come back to us. I think it's gone—having gone four times to AAC, it's gone there enough.
I can—I don't disagree with you, but I think it might be a good opportunity for us to give some—
Oh, I agree with that.
—limited input so that the applicant has a chance to address some issues with the hope that he gets it approved next time.
Right, and so that—that's actually what I was going to say—
Okay.
—is that we give the applicant input, but we also see what it looks like from the different angles with the aim of resolving the issues here so that we don't send it back. And I don't know if commissioners would agree with me on that, but I think that's where this should go.
I have a suggestion on that. And for your simulation that you're suggesting, it should be specifically from—I think—is it Bogart Trail down there?
Ridge Moore Road.
What is the—what's that?
Ridge Moore.
There's that, but isn't there a main—from the main view also from Bogart? Yeah. You may want to have both of those simulations. Not—the one we've got on the wall is sort of an elevated simulation, which you'd be able to see if you were a drone, I think. But I think that the ones that we need are from below. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, from below. We also have a suggestion from above, from Pinnacle Point, looking down. And you wanted it from the west—
Yeah, driving up Pinnacle Point.
Driving up Pinnacle Point. And those were the two—the additional one that you wanted. So with that, we have some elements of what will end up being a motion. But what I'd like to do now is give some direction and start with Commissioner Woods and come down.
It's always frustrating with me when we have something go back to the AAC so many times, and then they make an approval and the applicant decided not to comply with the approval. So it's a very difficult decision to even decide whether to continue this or just reject it outright. I'm inclined, at this point, to reject it. Hillside development, we have very few of it. And I think it's a precious commodity in our community. And the architecture that goes into that community should be architecture. And although I think this home has many, many merits to it, I'm not sure it's quite the right home for the hillside development. With that in mind, I think what I had heard at AAC was that what you see may not be what we get. So as an example, I am not a structural engineer, and I'm not an architect. But the HVAC was a question that came up. The spans—the big spans and how they would support it came up. There were no beams. So I'm not sure that what we see is what we're going to get from the comments that I heard at one of the AAC meetings. So I'm inclined not to support the motion, but to deny it.
I don't want to hear from the applicant why they don't agree to a number of these issues, including the front yard landscaping, before I come to any conclusions.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yeah, as I've indicated, I'm requesting that view from coming up the hill to the house. I personally think that the side yards actually have been sort of ignored in the discussion. The two concrete block walls at the property line, east and west, in my mind, are really not very attractive. I think they need to be—have articulation or breaks to them. They're—you know, the side yard is a bit oversized, actually. I think even the two—the east and west facades of a house could benefit from some breaks to them. And then finally, it hasn't really been discussed yet, but I think the 25-foot setback needs to be met. It's a big pad, a big site. But I think with some creativity in the floor plan of the house, that setback should be followed.
Commissioner Hirschman?
Yeah, I really don't like that front landscaping. I think it's totally inappropriate for this site. It has to be something that's completely naturalized, have a naturalized look to it. And I'd be very opposed to approving that landscaping in the front. I see what Commissioner Hudson's saying about that, especially the down-facing block wall, the west-facing block wall. The one on the uphill side will be mostly buried from the public. You'll see it from the house, but that's their house. But the downhill side, I think, is more of a public face and needs to be addressed in some more creative way. But I'm most concerned about the applicant's— I'm also concerned with not complying with the AAC comments. You know, these guys do a lot of work, and they've put a lot of hours into it. And then just to blow it off is troublesome. But I'm most concerned about how the property—and not just the house, but how the property addresses the downhill neighbors, particularly that wall. I don't know if they did that on purpose or not to not show that in the renderings. But it just smacks of not paying attention to it at the least and maybe kind of obfuscating it at the worst. And that's really the public face of the building, is that west-facing retain—not retaining wall—privacy wall. And the north, whatever direction that is, the downhill wall to the south—to the rear— thank you—to the rear of the property are really the public faces of the building, of the development, not the building. And frankly, I'm a little less concerned about the light spill. I think, once you're inside the house and you turn on a downlight—I don't know. Maybe I'm not reacting to it strongly enough. But to me, that's not much of an issue for me. But really, how the development presents itself is very concerning.
Commissioner Hirschman? I'm sorry. Mr. Callardine?
Sure. Most of my concerns have been addressed. I will support your motion to continue. And you're doing back to the AAC or coming back to us?
Us.
Okay. Yes, for—as part of that continuance, I certainly want to see good justification from the applicant for each of those recommendations that they did not choose to address from the AAC, because we take their concerns very carefully. And we're going to have to be pretty well convinced that those are not appropriate items, along with Sean's comments. Commissioner Hudson, I'm not as concerned as you may be about the 25-foot setback, because my understanding is that the other three existing homes also went into that setback up there, and that was a trade-off for having the additional community space on the private space on those. If my understanding is correct, then I'm not as concerned about it.
Can Steph respond to that?
Yes, the other three houses are all—have setback reductions. And in the original track map, there was a buildable area that was set aside to fit these houses on the lots. So as Commissioner Callardine stated, that's a good explanation.
Finally, to the color. I understand that you verified the HOA Association has approved the color, but we're still getting a lot of public comment about it, I guess. Is there any way we can make sure that this gets—the actual current proposal gets circulated and we're not addressing some prior proposal?
As I mentioned, the color has not changed in the past two revisions to AAC.
I want to make sure that the public members that are concerned about the color are—they're looking at the actual current color rather than the—any—I guess there was one earlier that was flat white or something like that.
The original version was flat white, yes.
And we also would need to verify that the proposed grading along that site that we see in the picture there and the—into the community property is approvable by the association. Is that—I think that's contingent—the whole wall system is contingent upon that grading. Am I correct?
That's correct.
So we want to make sure that that's acceptable to the person who has the critical path on that or the critical approval on that. And with that—
A few comments. The rear of the property is really important in terms of what people see. It looks very exposed and very open, and I can understand the concerns. In terms of the window tinting, I'm not—is—has it been established that the windows can be tinted without voiding the warranty for the windows?
I don't have the expertise to answer that.
That may be—that's—that can sometimes be an issue with tinting. And I—that's something I'd probably like to know. I do feel that the flattening of the roof in the great room would help a great deal for the neighbors with this property. And so that's one of the conditions that I was most concerned about. If the windows can be tinted with—the—without voiding the warranty, that would be helpful. I'd like to see landscaping in the rear. Probably the people who are nodding their heads won't like to know that I love the front landscaping. And it's probably only because I visited a Chrysler property this weekend that had the most phenomenal front landscaping. And it began to inspire me to redo my own backyard. That isn't a justification here, but I find some merit in the front landscaping. I may be alone in that, but I'm charmed by it.
I'm true.
And those are the major issues. I'm not sure if anybody wants to hear from the applicant at this point, coming forward and telling us if you'd like to come forward. We did have some questions in terms of the conditions. And first off, I'm assuming you're going to be compliant with our request to see different views of this property?
Yes, but I would like to answer each one of your questions. You're making assumptions on things that may not necessarily be accurate, so I'd like to clarify each of your concerns if I can.
Please, I could give you a few minutes to answer. I'll let the commissioners ask specific questions, but just if you want to respond for a moment to the things that we've raised.
I'd like to do it in the order that they've asked, so that way we could reiterate their concerns. I'd like to respond to those.
You actually—okay.
Maybe start with Commissioner Woods? We'll go this way, if possible.
You actually don't dictate our order, thank you.
No, I understand, but I just wanted to—
But Commissioner Woods, if you had questions, please go forward.
So there's a letter in here from the HOA, and I think we heard from one of the residents that there seemed to be some sort of a shakeup in the HOA. Can you talk to me about that?
Yes, there was no shakeup within the HOA. There were some self-appointed homeowners that appointed themselves to the HOA, and they were doing things that were completely inappropriate in regards to us moving forward on this project. So the board president took charge of the HOA and resolved the issues. So it boiled down to misinformation, things that we'd submitted on the plans. They were saying the lighting was 6,500 kelvins, and the plans, everything we submitted, showed that it was 3,000 kelvins. They said the houses were still white, which clearly they're not. We started out with an off-white, and we ended up with beige and brown tones. So just a lot of misinformation, and it needed to be resolved. It was more of an obstruction of trying to prevent the project from moving forward.
So there's three homes that are up there currently, and you own the rest of the lots, is that correct?
I don't own the rest of the lots. I do own multiple lots there, though.
So who controls the HOA, then? What's the—who's on that HOA that wrote the letter about the grading?
Which letter about the grading?
Well, we have a letter. Just—the question would be, how many board members are there on the HOA?
There's three board members. One is a neighbor, and two are the owner of the land.
Okay. And so you're the ones that—and you're one of those?
No, I'm not. I'm not a board member.
You're not a board member. It's the owner of the land, then?
The owner of the land and homeowner. And the homeowner represents, obviously, the other homeowners as well.
Okay, so those three felt it was okay to grade into this common area between the homes?
Sure. This is more along the lines of trying to resolve the problems that everybody's looking at as far as the height of a retaining wall. If we grade into the open space area, it would minimize the height of a retaining wall, which is beneficial. So if you imagine a home being built on Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4 is already built, those homes have retaining walls, it would be a nice way to tear it down. So the comments by the Architectural Advisory Committee were positive, and we took those into consideration. We didn't initially think it would be okay to grade into that area, but when we found out that was not a problem with the city and not a problem with the HOA, that helped mitigate the problems of having, let's say, a 10-foot wall or 8-foot wall. So now we can have a property line wall and grade down, which is more consistent with our original renderings that you see here. So—and you have to also visualize that a house will eventually be built on Lot 1. So when you're looking up or coming up the street, you won't even see these walls.
And then the couple of conditions that were put on by the AAC, what was your rationale for not honoring those?
Which ones were those?
Well, I think there was a series—
I think we've honored every one of them except for the tinted windows.
I think they reduced the height of the flatten the roof line, put in tinted windows, revised the front landscaping, and revised the back landscaping.
We've done everything— We've done everything they've requested. The, the roof height, if you look on the plan, it shows exactly what they're requesting. So the ceiling in the great room is flat, it's not sloped. The roof has to slope to drain. The question was more about solar panels. We're trying to be accommodating to the neighbors above that said that, well, they don't want to see any solar panels. Well, we haven't proposed any solar panels to be even included with this home, but the Title 24 requirements are likely positioning homes to have solar panels. And then we did find that the City of Palm Springs has a requirement for new construction to all solar panels. So, and we've mitigated the concerns by raising the parapet height and bringing the solar panels to follow the drainage slope of the roof deck.
And I certainly do not want to make a decision on bad information either, so I appreciate your clarification.
Yeah.
But Glenn, if we could go to the picture of the rear, if you wouldn't mind, just a moment. So there is no sloped roof anymore. You did make the roof and the interior great room flat.
The interior of the roof is flat, it always has been flat. The roof deck on the top is sloped, although the render doesn't show the slope.
So the lights that are in the great, I'll call it the great room, the living area inside?
Yes.
Are they sloped like this, or are they, are they shining out the windows, or are they flat, shining straight down?
They're flat, shining straight down. The recess can lights, like this.
Shining straight down, not on a slope like what we see above us here?
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. That's great clarification on that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Glenn? There seems to be a little disconnect here between what he's saying in terms of what they agreed to do, and you wrote, "The applicant has chosen to not make revisions to the submission," which were the ones you highlighted, so what's, what do you, what do you have to say?
Right. I'm, the staff report is written based upon information I've had conversations with Brian.
The plans speak for themselves. We've made these, we've made these corrections based on the AAC. And Glenn, I think Glenn was out of town, so we may have had a disconnect on some of the things that have been finished on the plan. But we did, on the last meeting, we incorporated virtually all of the comments, except for the tinted windows, which is a no-go. I mean, tinted windows are inappropriate for a view home. And the landscaping, Tom is the landscape architect, and I've talked to him about it. We've made the changes with the palm trees, we've made the changes of the gravel, we've made additional changes related to the grading and landscaping, creating a planter in the back. And we don't see a necessity to change the landscaping. It's fine, there's nothing wrong with it. Being unique and having something more interesting or more organized is not out of place for any hillside property or any house, for that's it. That's just, boils down to a matter of preference.
So you didn't agree to all the recommended changes?
We've made, this has come a long ways, and you'd have to have been involved in every...
Based on the October 1st meeting is what I'm talking about. And then the subcommittee meeting where, you know, talks about, at the rear, where Lockyer says, "Might the fence want to undulate in plan view slightly as well and be broken up, blah, blah, blah?"
Well, first off, the other three homes that are there don't have fences. I'm trying to work with the city and the building department, ultimately will have the authority on this, like most of the developments that we're doing within, throughout the valley that are hillside or golf course developments, they don't have fences. So it's likely this fence will be eliminated. It's not necessary to have it there, no one's going to climb up and get into this pool. And there are secondary precautions that can be taken with alarms, there's floating alarms that can go in the pool to alert somebody inside the house. Each city throughout the valley has adopted their own policy on fences, so we're hopeful that will be a possibility. And the fence would not be required, because we agree that the fence would not, is inappropriate for any house on a hillside.
To interrupt for a second, Flynn, we've had advice back from the building department on fences when we looked at other hillside homes in desert palisades. Has, has the advice from the building department changed now that we are changing building department directors?
Not that I'm aware of.
So your understanding is that a fence will be required, am I correct?
And I would prefer that the building and safety department respond to that.
And they're not present with us today?
No, they don't attend planning commission meetings.
So that's something additional that we'd have to get a confirmation on, thank you.
So it's your view that despite Tom Jackway's belief about the front yard being too busy and that it's going to become the design theme, you just don't agree with that, and that's your answer?
That's correct. I don't agree with it. It's, it's, I think it's a well-organized design, and there's nothing wrong with it. It meets the criteria for the HOA, the plant palette, and we've done everything that's necessary. So if somebody doesn't like the shape or whatever, that's just a personal preference.
Well, he is an expert, but you can call it a personal preference, but he, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions, no questions now. Just want to reiterate for the next submittal that you'll maybe get a little matrix of what the remaining outstanding issues are between the AAC and others, and your justification in writing for why you think that we should go back to, to exclude them.
The tinted window issue, is there a warranty issue on that, or is it just your preference as to what's appropriate?
I'm not sure tinted windows would accomplish much of anything, it just doesn't seem to be appropriate. I mean, if you're living within that house and you have these spectacular views, the last thing anybody would want would be tinted windows, to have dark glass. I'm not sure if Title 24 will allow it based on the solar gain, because a dark color will absorb more heat and might create more problems with Title 24, but it's something that we're completely opposed to. And also note that the natural glass does have somewhat of a tint, and it is called solar band. So solar band 60, for example, is probably what we would apply on this home, so that's a low E glass. And that is something that Title 24 and the State of California would require. So I think it's inappropriate to try and come up with some sort of tinted window system for a variety of reasons.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
So this is before the commission in term, we have a motion to extend getting some additional views and getting some additional matrix of what's out, is actually outstanding, an answer from building and safety regarding the fencing? And I'm wondering if we could get some answers on the title, is that building and safety with Title 24 with the windows?
At one point, Ms. President.
Yeah.
I believe that with the tinted windows, the issue was with the neighbors downhill, that they felt that that would block their view into the living room or the light coming out of the living room into the, you know, streaming down the hill. And that should be addressed to somewhat by the simulations, but we want to take, make sure that that, that we understand their comment correctly. Is that where that came from?
Yes.
I think the comment might have also been generated when the roof, or excuse me, the ceiling had a shed roof where it, where if it was a downlight, it would be more obtrusive to the outside. Now that it's flat, I think that's probably less, in my mind, it's less of an issue.
I'm hoping that Glenn and Angela can make sure what they understand the issue's to be and make sure that they're addressed when this comes back.
I did have one last question, and this was for the applicant, if you don't mind. When you said that the, the HOA is one homeowner and the landowner, does that mean that the HOA for this portion is still controlled by the landowner, they have the majority votes?
Yes.
Thank you. So we would also probably need the approval of the HOA for building into the hillside for the, or for the retaining, grading into the hillside for the retaining walls?
Yes, we don't have a letter from them approving that.
You don't have one?
We do not.
So it would be needed.
Is it appropriate to make a comment about how we feel about elements of this, or wait until it comes back?
We have a motion, I thought people had spoken to how they felt about elements that went forward to everybody, four comments. I thought you made them.
Well, I asked a lot of questions, but I want to make one comment.
Please.
I have a real problem with the front landscaping issue, so I just want to make it clear, that's a big one for me.
Sent on the commission.
Your dissent is frequent. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to continue this.
Are we voting by voice, or what?
No, can we vote on, the system isn't allowing us to vote on the system, so do we need to do a voice vote? The motion to continue passes, you know?
Do we have a date certain, or?
Do you have a date certain, Flynn, or do you just want this to come back?
One of the things that we'll be discussing is potentially an additional meeting in November, so at this point in time, I'd like to just continue the item, and we'll bring it back to you as soon as we can.
Great. Well, we have, sorry, bear with me. Does anybody need a break for a minute?
Sure.
I've also seen them at the neighborhood... neighboring houses zero lot line as well. Would that be allowed under this, or should we consider that?
You know, actually, I think we would be able to do that under the zero lot line development where the garage is on the zero lot line. So as part of a subdivision plan, they would submit the map to us showing, number one, the alley. Number two, the location of where the garage would be relative to the property line. And then we would process that as a subdivision map and a zero lot line development. So I think we could, just based on the language that we have proposed to date.
To take that a step further, what Commissioner Wood was saying at the last discussion on this subject. If the... if there is no alley and the applicant's design had the garage at the rear property line and the side property line, and had the driveway running the length of the property front to back, would that be allowable?
We would have to provide an exception. I think I could tweak the language there.
Commissioner Wood, is that... that's what you were talking about previously, correct?
I was basically talking about the driveway would go along the property line to the back where the garage would be.
Uh huh.
But the driveway could be in the side yard setback.
Right.
It's the garage could not be.
Yeah.
But this discussion is...
Now we're suggesting it might be.
Yeah, if it's the desire of the planning commission, I could word the language there in the code to allow the garage to encroach when it's at the rear of the property. That we could allow it to encroach into the rear yard setback, if that is the desire of the planning commission. The... certainly.
I would recommend then that the height of that garage be limited not to the... Actually, not even to the 12 feet, you know?
Okay.
Since it is right on the property line, potentially. Functionally, I guess it could be maybe 10-foot maximum.
Doing that would allow vehicle turnaround, for them to turn around and come back out straight, in a forward direction.
Okay.
No, no, I guess what I'm saying is it's positive to have it on the property line for the garage if it's at the rear, because a vehicle entering the garage would then have more backup distance to exit the property in a forward direction versus backing out the driveway for that length.
Okay, so I can make those alterations.
Is... would you really be able to... that's the question. Wouldn't this really limit it to just backing out the driveway? I think it would, and that's probably tight enough that it's dangerous.
You would need about 26 feet of space between the front of the garage to the back of the house to give you room to maneuver and then out. So it would require you to move the house up to your front setback in order to gain that space. Then you'd have to dedicate that area to paving.
Yeah.
Again, the model being these older neighborhoods in Los Angeles, you just back out of those. Now we all have rear cameras.
So again, I'll take direction from the planning commission into which direction you'd like to go. Just the final thing that I had also revised from our previous discussion. There was a desire to have an incentive for accessory dwelling units. And so in addition to allowing a 5% increase where the garage is at the rear of the property, I would also propose as an incentive for accessory dwelling units to allow an additional 5%. So our base lot coverage is 45%. If you had both the garage and the accessory dwelling unit, you could go up to 55%. If you just had one of those, then it would be limited to 50%, so.
Shouldn't we just limit it to one or the other? Going to 55% is occupying too much of that land. And it's getting too cramped.
It's going to be the alley. So you'll have that buffer between back-to-back houses.
But this way, you could have a side garage, a side driveway, a garage, and an accessory dwelling unit. And you would be 50... you just... there'd be no land left. I think that letting... going up to 55 is too much.
If we're in the discussion, I'm just curious, you know, if we look at Icon, their lot coverage when you go out there is quite extensive. There's very little landscaping at Icon. I don't know what the percentage of lot coverage is, but just as an example for us to ponder.
But Icon is also not an R1 neighborhood. It's a condo. It's what? Yeah.
It's a... it's a condo lots.
I would allow them to have both, but I wouldn't increase the lot coverage.
Those were the changes that I was proposing over the previous version that you had seen. And that concludes my comments to you. And again, at this point, I'll take direction.
The other question I had, and I know it's in our code, was just being... wanting to allow them to have a non... You know, a porch area. The code allows it to be covered on three sides, but not four.
Correct.
That feels like it's... do we... do we need to incorporate the three-side language?
No, what I've done is reference back to the definition where that language is. And you'll give me just a moment. Let's see. It says, "Any portion of a structure which is open on at least one side and is an extension of the exterior open space in the opinion of the Director of Planning and Building shall not constitute a building for the purpose of lot coverage calculations."
And have you ever opined that three-sided was fine?
I haven't had to do that yet in the four years that I've been here.
You haven't had that request?
I haven't had that request yet.
So it's before the commission, I'm... you know, I'm... I just was expressing concerns about how much lot coverage we have.
I think you're right about the maximum of 50%.
Can I ask a question of staff? Is a carport habitable space or non-habitable space?
It's non-habitable space.
Non-habitable space, okay. So the covered porch and carport, one and the same?
No, we calculate carports as lot coverage.
I see, okay.
But not porches, if you will, under that definition. And the reason is that this talks about being an extension of the open space. And carports really are not an extension of the open space.
Chair, were you agreeing that 5% was the appropriate incentive for either?
I think 5% is the appropriate incentive for either or both.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, do we have thoughts from the commission, starting with Commissioner Callard, Dan?
I think this is really, really good. It'd be a big step forward. And now I go into my broken record phase here. I think we're still missing a big component, though. When we started this, we were looking at all types of the small lot developments. And we've got the ones now... this addresses quite well the ones that are going to be separate lots, separate legal lots. But as we learned this morning, or we saw this morning, there's another way of addressing the small lot issue, and that is through the use of condominium lots. And I think we need to look at our, as a separate effort, our mixture... what do we call it? Multifamily density zoning to look at what happens when you have single-family residential within the multifamily zones. And to make sure that the types of questions that we were asking this morning, like what are the street setbacks? What are the yard setbacks, broad depths, all that sort of thing, that they do get addressed. And I would like to suggest when it's appropriate for a motion, that when we recommend this to the council, that we make a note that that is a work effort still to be done. I think that's what we're going to basically force all the small lots to do, is to become condo lots. Because probably, not very many of them are going to want to go to 5,000 square foot lots.
Or... Commissioner Hershman comments?
The difference, I think, is whether they're separate buildings, is all. I guess I'm disagreeing with you. I think in terms of risk, a developer could put a house here, could put a house there. If it's an individual lot, when it's a condominium, you're likely going to build them in groups. Even if it's phased, you're likely to build a group of them together.
Flynn, I commend you for picking up the comments and making it the document it is today. Thank you very much for that. I think it's a great step forward from the PDDs that we've seen to this. I think it's going to create a much more walkable community when somebody decides to exercise this part of the zoning code. I think there's a lot of benefits to it. I appreciate the discussion with my fellow commissioners as well on this to get to this point. The only thing that I would ask that would change would be what their chairs already asked, but maybe a couple other diagrams on the diagram page showing the garage in the rear and the driveway along the side, just so people can get a concept of the different variations that this zoning code can afford them. And again, thank you to staff.
And what I'll do is I'll just... for the graphics, when this goes forward to city council, include those graphics so they understand the concept as well, so.
Flynn, when... after we've finished with this, if those... if the changes on this and also the golf course conversion ordinance come back to us, if we're having a special meeting next week, is it possible just to see those changes?
Yes, if you'd like that as just an informational item on your agenda.
Just as informational items, so we know that we're finished.
Okay.
Just, I think this is a great step. I love the fact that we're looking at small lots, but we're keeping streets and we're keeping part of the grid and keeping it open. And the addition of alleys as a way of looking at it and garages in the back is fascinating to me. And it would... I'd love to see that, to see somebody try and do that. And I think it solves one of the problems we had with PDDs, which is that our community didn't love them. They didn't like the versions that we had approved of PDDs where we had individual homes inside of PDDs. Nobody... we just got negative feedback from them. So I think this... this offers something that's uniquely Palm Springs, and I think it's great.
So if I could summarize your comments, one is to allow the garage to encroach into the rear yard and still be loaded from the front street. And then as part of that, if the garage is encroaching into the rear yard setback to limit the height to 10 feet maximum. The increase in lot coverage should be 5% only, so a maximum of 50% either the rear-loaded garage or an accessory dwelling unit. Either one would qualify for an additional 5% in lot coverage. And then just informationally to modify the diagrams to show the garage and alley configuration at the rear of the lot so that members of the public understand how that works. So those would be the changes to this as proposed.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'll move that.
Madam Chair, we need to open the public hearing, even though we have no one here to...
Oh, excuse me, we've had the staff report, we've gotten close to motions. The public hearing is opened if any member of the public would like to testify. There being no members of the public who have come forward, we have closed the public...
today. Thank you very much for that. I think it's, it's a great step forward from the PDDs that we've seen to this. I think it's going to create a much more walkable community when somebody decides to exercise this part of the zoning code. I think there's a lot of benefits to it. I appreciate the discussion with my fellow Commissioners as well on this to get to this point. The only thing that I would ask that would change would be what their chairs already asked, but maybe a couple other diagrams on the diagram page showing the garage in the rear and the driveway along the side, just so people can get a concept of the different variations that this zoning code can afford them. And again, thank you to staff.
And what I'll do is I'll, just for the graphics, when this goes forward to City Council, include those graphics so they understand the concept as well, so.
Flynn, when, after we've finished with this, if those, if the changes on this and also the golf course conversion ordinance come back to us, if we're having a special meeting next week, is it possible just to see those changes?
Yes, if you'd like that as just an informational item on your agenda.
Just as informational items, so we know that we're finished.
Okay.
Just, I, I think this is a great step. I love the fact that we're looking at small lots, but we're keeping streets and we're keeping part of the grid and keeping it open, and the addition of alleys as a way of looking at it and garages in the back is, is fascinating to me, and it would, I'd love to see that, to see somebody try and do that. And I think it solves one of the problems we had with PDS, which is that our community didn't love them. They didn't like the versions that we had approved of PDS where, where we had individual homes inside of PDS. Nobody, we just got negative feedback from them. So I think this, this offers something that's uniquely Palm Springs, and I, I think it's great.
So if I could summarize your comments, one is to allow the garage to encroach into the rear yard and still be loaded from the front street. And then as part of that, if the garage is encroaching into the rear yard setback to limit the height to 10 feet maximum, the increase in lot coverage should be 5% only, so a maximum of 50% either the rear-loaded garage or an accessory dwelling unit. Either one would qualify for an additional 5% in lot coverage. And then just informationally to modify the diagrams to show the garage and alley configuration at the rear of the lot, so that members of the public understand how that works. So those would be the changes to this as proposed.
Can I get a motion?
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
I'll move that.
Oh, Madam Chair, we need to open the public hearing, even though we have no one here to.
Oh, excuse me, we've had the staff report, we've gotten close to motions, the public hearing is opened if any member of the public would like to testify. There being no members of the public who have come forward, we have closed the public hearing. The matter is before the Commission.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to propose a motion that, number one, would approve this as, with amendments that we've discussed today. Send it on for council, or is it going to come back one more time, or?
It's, no, it'll just come back to us as an information item.
So we would send it on to council. I would like to just add a note that we are still looking at the small lots within mixed-use developments, not saying we're approving them or anything, but I still think that's where, we can get a lot of applications for that, and we still need to discuss that. But that's just a note to the council that that still needs to be done.
Do people agree with the note to council? One, do you?
I think we should look at our, our two, our three, our four districts at some point in time. Again, they haven't been updated in a long time, and so it may be beneficial in the future to have that discussion.
So that we're still looking at the R?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's how I would phrase it, is that we're looking at it. Now, are we looking at that in terms of the update of the zoning and the general plan?
Correct.
So that's...
That's okay with me.
Okay, good. So that being the motion, do I have a second? Commissioner Hirschbein? All in favor, or can, if we can vote? That passes unanimously. We are through our agenda. We are at Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments.
I have a question. There was some mention of a special meeting for the golf course conversion next week? Is that what it was referring to, special meeting?
No, no.
What was the special meeting you had?
We, we were talking about a special meeting to meet the schedule of the Merelan, the Merelan people for the first builder. We had a very successful, two subcommittee, design subcommittee meetings with them, and they need to go on to working drawings. We think we are pretty much, we're at a rap, but we need to take official action on it, and they need to move forward. So we were looking at a special meeting next week?
November the 7th.
November the 7th, so one extra meeting? But it would come from that, and then we have a busy meeting the week after that. So if Flynn is going to be, is able to push any of the items from the next meeting into the special meeting, we will also do that, especially because on the next meeting, there's a council meeting that night, so we will have to be done by 4:00.
So if you all are available on November the 7th, we would like to do the meeting then. I've also had a request from Mr. Priest. Is there any way that we could move the meeting on the 7th earlier, for example, starting at noon? Is that a problem?
I think it looks like it's fine with, is there anybody here for whom it's a problem?
I won't be in town, so, but you'll still have a quorum, I believe.
Yes, we would still have a quorum.
A little chance that may not be.
We need four people here.
And we would have five with Mr. Maruzzi not in attendance. So we would have adequate to, to take action on items that day. Okay, so we'll go ahead and schedule the special meeting for November the 7th and starting at noon.
Thank you very much.
Other, other comments, or?
I still have another question.
Oh, sure.
Did the City Council approve the moratorium for the golf course conversion?
Yes, at last week's City Council meeting, they did approve a 45-day moratorium on golf course conversions, with the idea being that we will have a joint Planning Commission-City Council study session on the issue, on golf course conversions, planned development districts, the ordinance that we just got through here at Planning Commission, and then also the small lot ordinance. We'd have that on the agenda, too.
Well, that'll be a fun meeting.
And we've tentatively looked at November the 28th for the date of that joint City Council/Planning Commission study session. It's a scheduled City Council meeting date, and it appears that we would have time to do it then. I realize that may be a little problematic with vacation schedules, however, since it's the week following Thanksgiving.
Anything else from the Commission? We do, we, we had a more, the second level of moratorium pass on the demolition, the preservation/demolition ordinance, and Commissioner Donenfeld had been on that subcommittee. We, and he's, since he's left the Commission, I'm wondering if Commissioner Hirschbein would like to take his place. It's an ord, it's a subcommittee, and is there, is there time for someone to join?
Flynn, we're not meeting anymore, are we?
I, I don't know that there will be any additional meetings.
I'm on that subcommittee.
Yeah.
Fine, you're appointed.
The City Council Subcommittee met with me this past week to talk about the ordinance and timing of bringing it forward. They would like to bring it forward before the end of the year, and our moratorium was extended for four months, so that gives us some time to, to bring this ordinance forward. So again, I don't think that there's going to be any future Subcommittee meetings.
I just think to acquaint themselves with the issue, and since we, we, to have two members of the Planning Commission present, at least at the council.
Okay.
A council meeting on it, and I think that that would be good to...
Hasn't that already occurred?
No, it hasn't been heard yet. The moratorium has, but not the ordinance itself.
So if, if we are meeting with the HSPB, I'd like two members of our Commission to be present, and all it will require review is to read the draft ordinance.
So again, if we do have any additional meetings, then Mr. Maruzzi and Mr. Hirschbein will be the representatives from Planning Commission.
Just one request based on that. From the comments that were made by council members regarding the moratorium, at your recent meeting, were you able to clarify the steps that will be required so the public will better understand, the council will better understand what we're talking about?
Yes, we did talk about that, because that was a discussion at the City Council meeting regarding the moratorium.
Right.
Is the confusion on the part of members of the public. I, I think once we have the ordinance finalized and we're ready to roll it out to the public, that we'll have an education campaign that goes along with it, including presentations to the Board of Realtors and other groups who may be interested.
Good, that's excellent. Thank you.
In fact, I was chastised this morning at the Desert Roundtable for not broadcasting the moratorium, so.
And then the other item of business that came up when we were meeting with the Merelan people was frustration on their part that they'd gone through AAC, then came here and not having a design step, especially on new single-family product, that would help inform their decisions. And we, when Flynn and I were talking about it, we were talking about appointing a permanent design subcommittee that could be called to work on things, and my preference on that would be to have two architect members of the Commission and the Chair be that permanent committee, whoever the future Chair is.
I'd assume you've got, uh...
We haven't, we, we, we're going to, at the next meeting, we were going to talk a little bit. There were some recommendations regarding the AAC that came out of the planned development district meetings that we had talked about implementing at some point and bringing to council. Flynn thought that that would be an, an item of discussion at our next meeting, and we would talk through process in terms of how things came up, and there's some, some choices, having everything go through a, an initial pre, pre-development meeting to which we invite the AAC. There's a sense of comments. It could then go to a design subcommittee or a design, a combined design subcommittee. But we were, we're looking at what the process is, that we don't have people go through several meetings with the AAC, then Planning Commission, and several meetings with the Planning Commission to get to a resolution.
This is in reference to the next phase of Merelan that we...
Yes. And we will have next phases of other, other approved projects, where people are coming in with phasing. So we thought we would talk a little bit more about that next week, but in, to the extent that we need a design subcommittee called up, setting up a permanent one here, which means that your, that meetings would be noticed, I think, so we wouldn't be able to have a next-day meeting. We'd have to do 24 hours notice.
24-hour notice.
But having a design group that we could call up. And that, having the Chair be a piece of that, there'll be a new Chair, obviously, at some point in the near future, so having the Chair have responsibilities as well as the architects on the group, in the group.
I don't know if we're open for discussion for this yet, but I'm just curious, I heard Merelan as an example, we have, isn't that the role of AAC, or am I missing a link here?
No, we've, we've had things that have gone through AAC, and we weren't satisfied for, on Merelan with what came back to us, and especially since we had worked with AAC on the design guidelines and the houses we got back that AAC approved didn't really match the design guidelines that we had set up. And there will be instances where AAC is only advice to the Planning Commission, they're not, they are not a deciding body. So this Commission has the ability to step in and look at design, and we have often done that, so we're just trying to look at what that procedure is.
And trying to streamline it for the applicant, so they don't have to go through multiple sessions with AAC, only to also have to go through multiple sessions with Planning Commission.
And we, we've been looking at things like whether or not AAC should be a roundtable with the applicants, rather than a formal hearing process, so that items can be sketched through, worked through, dealt with at the time in a, you know, in a better, in a better, more productive process, a quicker, more productive process. So Flynn and I just, we've, we've had some criticism of things that have happened that have come from the council, as individuals on council, I wouldn't say council, and we just, and requests from applicants, and we wanted to see if we can't get a proposal that would work. The, the subcommittee, I believe the PD working group recommended that we have the AAC follow Planning, I mean, Planning Commission. There are a lot of different ideas that have surfaced in terms of how things would work, but the main issue is to get good design without subjecting people to a torturous series of seven or eight meetings.
I, I agree with the idea of making it less formal and intimidating. I like the roundtable discussion concept. A lot could be probably resolved back and forth, instead of having people sit in a dais, and it's all very intimidating for the applicant.
That's the way it used to be when I was on AAC.
Yeah, so we've, anyway, we've been looking at that, trying to, it came up again in the context of Merelan, but it also came in the context of people raising those issues with Flynn and myself. So we thought we'd do that next week.
So on November the 7th?
Right.
We'll have that as a discussion item, so that we can go into additional detail and, and thoughts on the matter. Okay.
But, and I think that's, that's it. Next, at our next meeting, we should also discuss Christmas party. Oh, I've, we passed over our City Council Liaison Report. Do you have anything that, that is, that issue that we should know about? None, my goodness. Thank you. Okay, so with that, are there any other comments?
This is Paul, I'm Flynn.
Oh, Planning Director's Report.
I, I think we've covered everything. I have in my notes to talk about the AAC slash Subcommittee process, which we've done and will do on November 7th. I've talked about scheduling the November 7th meeting, and then potentially the joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting on November 28th, so that covers all of my comments to you today. And again, thank you for your service.
Quick, quick, quick. Do we have to interview new members of the AAC before the end of December?
We will need to do that. We will want to do that, I think, in the first part of December is when I'd like to do that. I want to time it with the City Council interviews of Planning Commission at the same time.
Question for our City Council Liaison. As we look at interviews, are you planning on taking up any of the working group's recommendations regarding boards and commissions before the next appointment phase?
Before, I'm sorry?
Before we, we begin to, the council and this group begins to do interviews for the next?
There has been no schedule arrived at with regard to filling any of the boards and commissions, and that's something that we need to identify schedules on, so I'm, the goal was to have everyone extend through the end of December 31, but we should be getting announcements out regarding those boards and commissions already, and to the best of my knowledge, they have not gone out.
I, I think one of the questions was, one of the recommendations was to have the meetings in the evenings, and I was wondering if that's something the council is going to be taking up.
Council is clearly going to have conversation about moving to evenings, but there has, that conversation has not taken place, and I'm not, I'm not in a position to guess what the sentiment of the majority is going to be on that. I can imagine some differing points of view.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned until our special meeting at noon on November 7th.
Correct, correct. Thank you.